Second.
Moving second to open, all in favor? That's a vote. Craig, you want to try the warrants?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the following warrants, warrant number forty-four, an amount of forty-nine thousand one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. Warrant number forty-five, an amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and three cents. Warrant number forty-six, an amount of one thousand six dollars and seventy-four cents. Warrant number forty-seven, an amount of seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. And warrant number forty-eight, total of forty thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and twelve cents.
Second.
So I move a second to approve warrants forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight as presented, all in favor? That's a vote. Um, approval of our minutes from the regular council meeting, I don't know if we got enough here to do that. Because I don't. Yeah, so we're gonna have to table these until the first December, right?
I hope we do.
See if we can get those done before New Year's.
Let's hope one of the other guys shows up.
Yeah, we can go back to it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, nothing under old business. All right, new business, abatement of taxes, uh, possible motion. Town council approve a tax abatement for, uh, account one-one-five-one in the amount of six fifty-eight sixty-nine, and that is due to...
Ronnie Wallace, and it's in the packet, the actual pages in the packet say so.
Oh, it is, okay. Structures are not as in good condition as they were last inspected, okay?
Okay. Make a motion with the, we move that the Baileyville Town Council approve the tax abatement for Ronnie Wallace, account number one-one-five-one, the amount of six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents.
You're familiar with which structures these are?
Uh, I believe this would be the airline motel, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, airline motel.
Okay. I'll second then.
All right, it's been moved a second to abate, um, account one-one-five-one, in the amount of six fifty-eight sixty-nine, due to condition of structures, all in favor? That's a vote, I'll send this down. There we are. Okay, carrying for designated account balances.
They're in the packet, there's two pages.
I have a question. Are we saying that this is what they had left over? Didn't we approve that at town meeting to do this?
No, these are what's left in the budget.
Oh, what's left in the budget, okay.
From eighteen, nineteen budget, carry into this year's budget.
Got you, okay.
And, I mean, you guys can change those amounts, obviously you can make them less, I just, we had talked about taking that code enforcement.
Yeah, why would we believe code enforcement and put it into a reserve account?
Well, we.
I mean, the library, all the other ones, makes sense.
Well, the code enforcement, because we've said about taking that and putting it with the other ones that are already in the reserve, and maybe doing the cemetery censum of that.
But we're still gonna be part-time throughout this whole year with that position.
Yeah, but this is, this is last year.
No, no, I understand that, so that what we've spent last year is gonna be roughly what we spend this year. So fifteen thousand makes sense to go to some reserve.
You gotta remember too, that he's been working fewer hours than he had been.
Right, that's, the fifteen thousand makes sense to go to some reserve account.
Just cut it down a little bit?
Right, well, leave twenty-five hundred in there.
But that's what I'm gonna do, isn't it?
That's what I'm gonna do, and put the rest into a reserve account. And I agree, 'cause we can move, even if we didn't use it in the cemetery, we can use it, you know, into Mike's budget if we have to.
Yep.
So, um, all the other ones make sense. Now, animal control, the ten thousand dollars is in there because...
We raised, uh, the money for, um, the building, and then we went with, uh, Paul's. Now, the, we can use that ten thousand if we have there to pay for next year.
That's what I'm saying, can we do that to offset the, the, uh, payment we're gonna owe?
Yeah, we could do that for, we could do that. That's coming up pretty quick too.
So are you looking at a motion to, um, obviously carry these into the reserve accounts and code enforcement to be, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars in the balance into, I would recommend, the cemetery?
So just carry twenty-five hundred of the...
In the code enforcement, and carry the ba- balance of that into cemetery? Does that make sense?
Yes, that was cemetery.
Then I'm gonna let you work this out best I can.
Yep.
Make a motion if the Baileyville Town Council approve the carryover of the funds designated into the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget, for the purposes for which they were approved for use in future years. With the exception that we will keep twenty-five hundred dollars in the code enforcement line and the, the sum of the rest into the cemetery line.
Cemetery reserve, account reserve.
So now, did the rest of them, would stay?
Stay where they are, they were pulled in with animal control going to reserve.
Okay.
Library reserve and sewer expansion.
And on the next page is all the reserves that are there now for the auditor.
Right, so it's been moved a second to approve the, uh, carryover of the funds designated in the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget, for purposes they were approved for in future years. With the exception of code enforcement, uh, being a twenty-five hundred dollar carryover in the balance going to the cemetery, reserve account, all in favor? That's a vote. Now, do you, do you, the quick claim deed, we went through the ones that you folks sold, and it's interesting, on the first one you had, you had the, uh, conditions.
And then you had, if any of the above three conditions are not met in the time allowed, the property revol- revert fully to the town. That's good, but on this one, you had, if the town takes no action to claim the above three conditions have not been met within eighteen months of the transfer, these three conditions will be deemed to have been fully met. Be, to fully meet the terms of this transfer.
Okay.
That was the first one, the next day you did one for this greenhouse back there, and you eliminated that language.
Okay.
I would like to make that the standard, uh, language.
Which one did we not, did we put that in?
That was, um, Caleb McKenzie. But the others, you did, um, change the language, uh, and then on this one, it's even different, but I would like to keep the, uh, language that was in the gentleman's.
What's the third one?
Uh, you've got a third one here, you've got four, you've got Meliza Monk. And the buyer agrees that, that he or she must improve the property in compliance with Baileyville property maintenance ordinance within, uh, sixty days. Um, of the transfer, and into compliance with the Baileyville land use ordinance and the building codes in the town within one year. I'd also like to make sure the payment in full is, is added in that one, and keep the ones, the conditions you left with the law.
All right, but the, so we have four total.
Yeah.
One being Hillside Street, one being Broadway, one being Washington Street, who's the other one for?
Maybe it was Hillside, Meliza Monk was Broadway, and this one's also Hillside. Stephen Bailey?
Oh.
Stephen Smith, sorry.
Yeah, that's Charlotte Greens.
Charlotte Green, Charlotte Greens, please, have they done anything with that?
I don't know.
But that doesn't look that bad on the other one.
No, but...
I've, I've told Andy, he needs to go, go and give, give me a report on those.
Right, well, I'm gonna tell you what I think we should do with them. I think we should adhere to what's going on with them, one of them has done work to make it, um, presentable. One, I don't think's done anything other than, is there anyone living in that, oh, it's on Hillside Street? I just think it's vacant, but they're keeping up with it, haven't done anything with it. This one back here, and the one on Hillside, the one on Hillside needs to be looked at for an unsafe structure.
That's the, uh, McKenzie.
McKenzie. I think we should act on these.
Well, McKenzie is the one that...
I understand, we can, but we can act on it based on what he has there, but that's definitely...
Correct.
I saw a movement there last week, just kind of out of the blue.
Out of the blue?
Didn't see what it was, I just saw vehicles and stuff there.
And then this one behind here, I mean...
She started out well, and then has...
It's already done inside, it's a thing, I mean, I don't...
But the outside looks...
Yeah, I know, but the inside's all done.
Why don't we draft up a letter stating that, you know, unless this gets done, we're gonna have to move to the next step? Because there's another one here, and I gave, evidently it was prior to, but it's on Summit Street, the old metal place that burned. That had great things that was gonna happen to, but this never happened.
There may be one, I don't know, but I didn't type, but I was just seeing on...
No, and I'm sure Eaton and Peabody did, I'm sure.
Yeah, I think Rick though.
Really?
Yep.
I don't know if I necessarily want town management to do a quick claim deeds without getting some...
Verbiage.
Verbiage and legal to...
Yeah, I mean, it's like, uh, what's his name, Sothers, I'm, yeah, I've got Hubert looking at that. All right, um, conditions on this, and what was the one, uh, letter?
Well, the Hillside one needs to be addressed, just to see, I mean, the, the front porch is up on stilts and, but I mean, we've got a basement up on Washington Street that's open that just has caution tape around it, so... I'm sure it's not gonna be an unsafe structure.
There must be plenty of properties being looked at right now, I would imagine that we're going to get some feedback on.
Washington Street, uh, oh, who was that, did that play a bit?
Who owns that? Doesn't Frank Crosby own that now?
We'd not probably be when Frank played, when Eddie stole it.
Sorry, I had it on, yeah.
Well, they did, they didn't file it at the registry deeds, they may have done it and not filed it, we're still checks and eddy, so...
Same thing with the place on, on Hillside that, uh, Mike's trying to buy.
Right.
That's all taken care of, I mean, well...
Yeah.
Good. I'm just glad to see that one finally got...
While I think of properties, there's not much movement anymore on the year-round yard sale at the top of the hill coming into town, I see.
Yes.
There's been some, you've seen, uh, just that one.
I saw some more going in, some more was going in when I drove by about twelve-thirty to Jack.
Trouble is, he just says that one guy working on it.
But I think moving forward, I would like to get a motion that we approve the language that he talks about that really, um, puts together, um, us doing what we say we're going to do. And then I have something, once we get to the, um, our comments, and I think might help us, because a lot of times we, we act on things, and then there's a timeframe, and so much has happened between...
Yes.
That and now, that we kind of lose sight of some of these things, and I think, I think I got a solution for it, but maybe. So if we could get a motion for, um, to be able to approve the language that Chris spoke of us regarding the quick claim, quick claim deeds of the conveyed by the town of Baileyville and the individuals or organizations. And we'll, we will approve, I mean, he'll give us the quick claim deed to approve before we sell the piece of property.
I move that the Baileyville Town Council approve the proposed language for future quick claim deeds, the property conveyed out of town to individuals or organizations. Additionally, the council approves rigorous enforcement of the conditions imposed on those deeds.
And a second there.
So moving second to approve the quick claim deed language for future property conveniences, um, as stated in, uh, what Chris has sent down to us. And moving forward, we'll get the quick claim deed to approve before sale, um, all in favor? And that's a vote. All right, spending club blanket letter for games of chance bingo and bingo, and, and the liquor license.
Yeah, it's all over there, it's on you.
Oh.
Make a motion that the Baileyville Town Council approve the blanket letter for games of chance and bingo license to the spending club. And do we need a separate motion for that, or can we do it all in one?
Yeah, there's like a one there for the liquor license.
So you, we've got a one out for the games of chance and the bingo license? Are you second on that?
Yeah.
Been moving second to approve the games of chance and bingo license for the spending club in Baileyville, all in favor? That's a vote.
And make a motion that the Baileyville Town Council approve the liquor license for the spending club.
Second.
So moving second to approve the liquor license for the spending club, all in favor? And that's a vote, and we'll send these down. So we gotta sign this in as many places?
Just one more new spot, I think.
That's it on this one? All for bingo.
The full ads and...
Yeah.
And I tell you what, if you don't have that, the state gets mighty upset.
All right, so the next thing on our agenda is the road toll for the American Legion, post twenty-three for May twenty-first, twenty-twenty? And this is something we do every year, so I don't see any issue with it.
I move that the Baileyville Town Council for the volunteer road toll on May twenty-first, twenty-twenty for the American Legion WT Ren post number twenty-three.
I'll second that.
So moving second, so you have the Baileyville Town Council approve the voluntary road toll on May twenty-first, twenty-twenty for the American Legion WT Ren post twenty-three, all in favor? That's a vote. All right, moving on to Chris's report.
Okay, the restricted truck ordinance, you have a copy here, read it, tell me what you think. Have modified, also modified lawyer again, or maybe that's fine. If you look in, uh, basically, it's, it's pretty bland, it, 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 basically, any truck over twenty-six thousand ta- uh, pounds gross vehicle weight, um, is excluded from, uh, various roads, or that's, can be excluded from, uh, various roads. If you see in section three, no truck routes, uh, uh, established the town, established no trucks allowed roads, avenues, or streets to include the following roads, avenues, and streets. Main Street, Palm Street, First Avenue, Second Avenue, Third Avenue, and Fourth Ave. Are there any others that we want to restrict? I think that pretty much covers everything.
You know, where they're at, um, issues with more than two axles?
Yeah, well, it's, it's got more than two axles, the other thing is, if you flip it over, on the backside, uh, if you go down number four there, uh, in section, in section three, trucks accessing three buil- businesses for deliveries, serving mainway, windows, New York style pizza, and industrial electric supply, will be allowed access on Main Street to those businesses.
And our own town vehicles, and our own town.
Yeah, that's actually, if you go to before that, um, there you go, um, number two, operation of trucks owned or operated by the town public utilities or any contractor while engaged in repair maintenance, or construction streets, road improvements, or street utilities within the town.
Well, I do know, we get deliveries, Tamros, from Pepsi and Coke and...
They're in the full-size truck?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
And I, I gotta be honest with you, I get the twenty-six thousand pound rule. But, I, I mean, I'm just thinking about a full-loaded one oil truck, a full-loaded garbage truck, you're gonna be over twenty-six thousand pounds. I mean, just by default on the garbage truck, you're gonna be close to twenty-six thousand pounds.
We can add garbage trucks in there.
What about the potential for delivery to any new businesses that could come in? Potentially.
You, and what you're saying is you go, you'd like to see literature in there that states if a new business was to come in?
Right, 'cause it's kind of, it's specifying just certain businesses that we have kind of established.
But I think what we need to do is take this, read it, and come up with a list of changes. I, I would suggest this emailing to him so that he can get them together for our first meeting in December, so we can move forward with this. I, I do, I do think you need to look at that twenty-six thousand pound weight, and maybe Jamie, you can help him out with that, because that's a pretty light truck. I mean, what's your little six axle weight?
I, I've, I've weighed thirty thousand in my own truck before with a trailer behind it, not legally, but I can do it easily.
So I think you, you guys need to kind of craft that, 'cause I mean, I know, I mean, if we've got, you know, four thousand gallons of the oil on there, that, you know...
Four, two pounds per, per gallon.
And you add the truck in, but, all right, so...
Camera oil, garbage trucks, so we're gonna have to look at what it is.
Well, you gotta, I think you just gotta use general, because Denver delivers the air, Eastern delivers the air, so you gotta be general. The swat.
Well, maybe even the wording of home deliveries, and, you know, like, you're trying to keep it as vague as...
Right.
Possible with the stuff that we don't mind.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, the purpose of this is really geared towards one thing.
Right.
We are starting to see some...
Regular wear and tear, yeah.
We're starting to see some impact on the signs.
Good, I mean, 'cause we could, I mean, somebody could pull on a full-size moving van, right?
Yes.
And be able to that.
Yeah, I mean, anyone that moves, that, that works at the miller buys a home in Sunrise Ridge, and it's one of those allied van things, is gonna be able to that, so, there's gotta be exceptions to the, to this. So anyways, um, to get you up to speed, Steve, um, in your packet, there's an ordinance regarding the truck, um, ordinance that we're trying to put through on avenues restricted streets. Uh, he'd like us to read through this, and then before our first meeting in December, get some of your questions and concerns out to him. Uh, one of the ones that, that's come up is the businesses and the types of vehicles, and, um, the twenty-six thousand pound gross vehicle weight is probably gonna be too low. Just based on what has to go down those streets. So, um, anyways, with that being said...
Fifty-two thousand.
Well, the, the, isn't, the self-rental road's fifty-nine thousand, right? I'd almost think that would probably be your starting point, would be fifty-nine thousand. But again, I think between you and Jamie, you can, Jamie's gonna know what type of vehicles hit those streets, he's particular to one team. So, we can move back to approving our minutes, I believe.
What did you say?
I mean, uh, because...
A petition.
Oh, okay. Just to make it long, it'll affect us all. Great.
Undesigna- we got, uh, the first cut of the audit, and something just doesn't seem kosher, their undesignated fund balance, uh, has a start from one point two million to, um, over five million, or over about five million. And that is, uh, impossible, so something's not being in the right place.
Is it one of the loans for the school or something?
There's something, they've, they've gotta be sticking in the wrong place, so, I mean, I'd, I'd like to think that, yes, I, that happened, but no.
Is it because they didn't start spending on that loan, or a lot of the person that's here?
I'm, I'm not sure, that's what I've gotta ask Peter.
I bet it definitely does.
Because that's, that's the only thing I can think of, because it's, it's just crazy, that, I'd love to have that in there, we'd be set for a, a year or two.
Yeah, there you go.
Uh, well, you know, we, I think we could keep taxes down.
A little bit, probably, for a few years.
DBU met, um, last week, and, um, currently, town of Baileyville is, uh, in a one point five million dollars, we have spent one million eighty-four thousand, uh, so we have over four hundred thousand left. Plus the, the money that came back to us, so we're looking pretty good for what's, uh, for, for going up to square point, uh, at this point in time. We also had an update, uh, from the, uh, Tim McAfee was there, and we talked about adding other towns, that other towns would have to pay, uh, basi- it basically even like Alexander, rather than try to run a cable out of, um, out of Baileyville, or even Bering. If either of them comes on board, they probably need their own headends like we have, but like Bering could probably be done on a, just a, a panel that has two sides, one for the contractor to hook up to, one for the DBU to have. Uh, Alexander could, because of the side, the number of people, they could probably get away with one of those buildings, and if the interior would be split in half, so that they could again access each portion of that. However, um, the one thing that they do need to coordinate with us, and it'll save them money, and it'll bring money back into our pockets, is they need to pay their parent, their, uh, legal, of the financing costs, of the insurance cost. Uh, because there is a, a fair amount of money, um, tied up in those, you're looking at, um, for example, I think insurance, insurance alone was... Insurance, we're, we're looking at, uh, we paid over seventy thousand dollars, uh, Cal's paid eighty-eight thousand dollars, almost eighty-nine thousand dollars, so just on that alone.
There's money that will be coming back.
Some money coming back to us. We're starting to see money coming back in, but we only, we only have very few customers at this point.
But they haven't started their campaign that I've noticed.
No, one of the things, the guy that is, does all, that, that has done the majority of the house hookups, tore his ACL, and is out, so he's got, he's had to contract other people to come in to replace him. So he, he's hired two new people to come in, or contracted two new people to come in and start doing, uh, the household hookups.
But, but, again, I wasn't at this meeting, but why haven't we done the push to get customers?
Well, again, when the guy tore his ACL, they had their campaign ready to go to everyone's house, and they pulled it, they, they stopped it till he could get some bodies to help get it, get it going.
But that's been addressed, according to them, the email.
According, according to them, uh, we're, we're back on track with that. Yeah, that, uh, we wanna get any towns that come on board, we wanna have them have skin in the game on that kind of, on board, so that we, they, they pay some of the price. Light goals are starting to go up slightly on those, but then that's to be expected, because it's heating season. Internet, we're seeing a lot of hits, it's up, uh, forty percent in the last thirty days, or last twenty-eight days, I should say. And we're kind of wondering, you know, Axiom said, oh yeah, we're coming on board, we're coming on board. I don't think you're gonna see Axiom come on board till everything is done in the system.
And they can see what's going on.
Well, that's true, that they can, that they can start spreading from there, because right now, you, you've got phase one and phase two completed, we're in the middle of phase three, and that's still only reaching about, uh, if, if, by the time they finish with phase three before the end of December, that only reaches probably about thirty-five percent of this town. Phase four and five is when the bulk of this town will be able to be hooked up, and then phase six, uh, all the outlying areas, bare coast and whatnot. And then for us, we would have probably a phase seven for square point, right? And, let's see. let's see. That is basically it that I have.
Alright, well, let's go back to three for approval of our minutes of the regular council meeting, now that Steve is here, so we can hold other guys. I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the regular council meeting from November twelfth, two thousand nineteen. Second, Ben. The move second to approve our regular council meeting minutes from November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, all in favor?
All abstained.
The vote, and if they should not vote, it's not the end. That is a vote and approved. Alright, so we're gonna move on to you all set?
Spent it club, we should have the language for that. Then have them make us additional insured on their policy.
And you'll get what JR on that?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, moving on to public comments. Marilyn? Jamie? Nothing. Mike?
Yeah, you notice the thing about Bay Cat right there on your table there? I've been working really close with Paul, the earlier in the past month or so. We are at the capabilities now of live streaming. We can livestream, we did the livestream of the Schoolwood meeting the other night. We will be livestreaming basketball games, and what you do is you take a picture, I don't know, can't remember the wording of that. They're gonna be posting that, so people can either livestream or get on the archives and watch the game later. We're not livestreaming the council meeting tonight, that's strictly up to you guys, if you wanna go in that direction, you don't have to. I air them later, under the archives and things like that, but that's up to you. I just wanna get you guys up to stuff, so when you see that, you know what's going on. So we're doing pretty good. There are two channels, there's one and two on there, so technically, if there's a basketball game, we could livestream that on channel one, and the council meeting on two. We have the capabilities of doing that, so I'm just, we're getting there. But I didn't realize it was all this, it's been, been quite interesting, we're doing it, so.
And exciting at the same time.
Yes, so I'm just catching you guys up on that.
Perfect, thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Alright, we'll move on to closing comments from the councils. Curry?
Nothing.
Steve?
Nothing.
Acacia?
No, not for me.
Alright, I just got a couple of things on here, we talked about the quick claim deed, talked about the spending club. One of the things I'd like to put together, we, we have our minutes that we look at, but there's things that we act upon in the meetings that sometimes takes a couple of weeks to get some answers on, and sometimes we miss those. I would like to do an action list, and I'm throwing this idea out to where you will need an answer for something, well, we pick on you, Craig. And we put it, seven in the minutes, it's still in the minutes, because those are the actual documents that we need. But we have an, an action list that Chris, in the next meeting, Greg Croman wanted to know what happened to the sewer on Main Street. And we have an answer, and if he doesn't have an answer, because he hasn't gotten it yet, he moves on to the next council meeting. Because I think we miss a lot of things. You know, Chris has stuff he has to get done every day, and some things fall in the cracks. I think if we can say, you know, in your council, the closing comments or during our regular agenda, if there's something that we need answered, not only do we have it in our minutes, but it gets put to an action list, which the next packet that we get to the agenda will have that action list in it. And then we can say, we're at least, one, keeping up with what we said we're gonna do, and two, we're at least saying that the minutes that were written there, the things that wanted done and that, have at least got somewhat of an answer to them. Is that something that you see as doable?
I think it's very useful.
Marilyn, do you see it as being useful?
Definitely, yeah.
Because things do get.
It can happen, you know, and, you know, shame on me for not suggesting this years ago, but as I get older, I guess.
Perfect example of the maintenance ordinance. That's, we talk about that almost every meeting, and it just, we do this, we've done it about three or four years in a row, just, we're back to snow again and changing it.
Nothing has happened, you know, and it's, it's anything, and if you, if it's something we really want an answer on, just I'll ask, you want that on the action list? And then Chris can have an action list and stuff that we need to look at. And he may not be able to get it by the next meeting, but at least it's on there and carried over.
And that can be part of that town manager's report, maybe?
I, well, wherever the town manager's report or section, is where I would like to see it. And then that way there, we're getting answers, if a taxpayer asked you a question, can go on that list. You know, in that way there, we're giving it to Chris, and Chris is gonna have to put it, so he may get reminded of something that he forgot about. We may get reminded of something we forgot about. Do you guys see that as a useful tool or a waste of time?
Just give it a try, yeah.
The only other thing that I have on here is, how are we doing, and I know we've got a lot of employees with a lot of tenure. How are we doing on vacations? Are we carrying any over? Are we staying under the guidelines of what?
I think we had, Karen's got two weeks, and she's.
Well, we're allowed to carry two.
And, and I think Mike's got.
Well, I know Mike, Brazilian, but I'm talking about present, can't talk about past, because the past is the past. I'm talking about as we stand today, from the last twelve months, how have we done?
I think Karen is just holding in line, she got eight for two and carried two.
So that leaves her with one, but that leaves one.
So she took one week, whatever, she took some. She's still got seven weeks on the books, because she just got five.
Right, because we allowed the two to carry, right. I, I think we need to make sure that we're looking at that, to make sure that we're, one, that the employees aren't getting chipped out anything. And two, that from our budgetary standpoint, that we're prepared for that portion of it, because it, it is a liability. And I just don't wanna get, you know, if, let's use Mike for example, I don't, how many weeks you have is none of my business, but I know it's a lot. And I just wanna make sure, I know the town has enough money to be paying for it, that's not what I'm worried about, but I wanna make sure that we, we have budgeted it, and that we're covered.
But we, we have discussion every single year, and last year, you guys said that, you guys made the suggestion that out of five weeks, that the employee may be write down three weeks, the three, you know, and that they, the two they could carry, but to write down at least three weeks. It just, that's another thing that just gets.
Well, and that's part of the, that's part of the issue, I know, I think, Craig, working in the mill, you have to pick your weeks out in advance, and there's a lot of coordination that needs to go into things like that. We need to come up with some type of system that, at the end of the year, the, close to the end of the budget season, that we're not looking at forcing someone to take a vacation, because we're making them lose a week, you know? And that's not what we wanna do, that wasn't the purpose, what we wanted to do.
Or have somebody take the last three weeks of their year off in a row, and stick one person by themselves for three weeks straight.
But there's no reason why, I mean, use Karen for instance, she's not using her vacation time, there's no reason. And yeah, she wants to carry two, but she just got paid two and carried two, there's no reason why at fifty-two, you.
Well, but you see, getting paid for two and carried two, see, that's, you're adding money to the payroll line. If you're taking vacation and getting paid for it, then you've made it a fifty-four week year. Are we budgeting for that purpose? See, that's, that's gotta stop, we, we can't.
No, the only thing that's gonna save us this year is that we budget for a full person for the year. So we're gonna, we're gonna have some money left over with that.
Do you see what I'm saying with this?
We talked about, we talk this pretty much every year.
Right.
Yes, we do.
We've gotta come up with some type of system that works for everyone, we're not here to say we have all the answers. But you can talk to your employees, but from a budgetary point, which is why we're on here.
And I don't wanna hear, I don't wanna hear she don't take vacation because of payroll, because I can learn how to do payroll. I'm very fast learner.
And we bring in the next person too.
Right.
And, you know, we are, everything's direct deposit at this point.
Right, but I think between yourself, your department heads, and your employees, you guys can put something together that we can finally stop harping on things like this, because I was under the understanding that we were budgeting for, that we are budgeting for at least their vacation, but that's if they take two, five weeks off.
I think, I think we, what it boils down to is Karen is, is an issue, and Mike simply because of the way Mike's.
Right, but we grandfathered anything prior to, and Mike's got a lot of stuff going on, but you've done a much better job since we put together some policy where you're not, well, necessarily, well, he was carrying five over some years, he wasn't taking any time off.
Well, I'm trying, it's almost impossible, being the only person in my department, it, it's virtually impossible, sometimes.
I, though, I think I've.
And I'm working on it, Chris and I have talked about it.
Trying to get a take.
Try.
Four weeks during the year, we're in between seasons.
Sometimes it's just hard, that you've gotta make a decision you don't wanna do, because you think you're upsetting your program, but it's more important to you. And to help, it's healthy wise, you know, it's, it's more important.
I tell you, if I take some days off, people know I'm gone, and then, I do hear about it.
Yep, but you know what?
Like I keep telling you, have them come to me.
You, you, you got it.
But our salaries are.
I'm starting to laugh, Mike, you know why I'm laughing? Because I want somebody to say something to me taking a vacation, because I got the answer for them. You might wanna have to shut the camera off, but I have no problem telling them, whoever it is that wants to complain about me taking a vacation, I don't livestream. I have no problem telling somebody, so.
It's alright, I, I.
No, but you know, it's not fair for somebody to poke at you because you didn't take time off, or you took time off, and they didn't get to have the basketball game, or have open gym, or whatever. Sometimes you, you become the important person, instead of being that person that, well, I can't take time off, because I gotta open up the gym, or I can't leave town, because I gotta make sure the fields are striped and stuff. I mean, that's, so, that's when people step up to the plate and do things. You know, they get used to that, well, Mike's gonna do it.
It's exactly right, and when it doesn't get done, well, how come you didn't do it, Mike?
Because I was on vacation, or I was on my day off.
Because that's exactly what happens.
And that's what you say. And you show them your keys and say you can have them anytime you want, and you can do a better job.
Someone else will need to volunteer.
Well, no, I mean.
Especially this month.
Krieger won't there for.
But it is my, my whole, I don't care what the employees, what you guys craft up, but from budgetary reasons, we need to do a better job, because we're not prepared for this, and what we're putting out there for the budget is wrong, because the salaries aren't matching what's, like Marilyn just said, that number that's in the book, that says fifty thousand dollars really should only have been forty-eight thousand dollars, that somebody took, got paid out for two extra weeks vacation. So as long as we get a line in our budget that offsets that, I'm fine with that. It's however you guys, and I think you guys can do, and I think I see enough consensus that we'll approve our policies. And other than that, that's all I have. What's on our action list item right now? Well, one is the hours, the payroll.
Notice others' deeds?
Yeah, notice others' deeds should be on there.
Spent it club, additional insured.
The Washington street letter. What did you mention before Jamie, you know? Property maintenance. Oh, property maintenance.
Yeah, that's too late now.
How we get to a point, we throw everything into it, then it just kinda fizzles, now we're back to winter, to where we really can.
I mean, if I was to get a letter in the spring at this point, I couldn't throw that in the trash quick enough, because every year, we send the letters out, and then we never do the, it's like not spanking a kid, but telling me you're spanking them all the time. After a while, it pretty much tends to, yeah.
But I think if we can do little things like this, it's gonna help all of us as counselors, and it's gonna get some things done that reserve, Robert, reserve's property needs to be on that action list.
Rocky's?
Rocky.
And also the signs for the fields.
Right. Do we know who's box has it sitting there? I don't, but you know, and he thought it was overloaded, I mean, I know they can get that on the truck. That's not, I'm saying there must be funding.
Yeah, and I, I was just gonna kinda mention it to somebody to kinda get going with it, but I don't know whose box it is, I didn't see it.
I mean, I'll be honest, I think it's Sally's, but it looks like an old.
Old boots?
Yeah, it looks like an old Freddy dumpster, so. But, you know, if you could get that out of there, and then, then you'd be able to see what's left in the lot. I mean, you've done a great job to that point, but then it just comes to a standstill. And if there's anything during the two-week period that you wanna call Chris on to say, hey, can you put this on the list? Because we need, you know, I forgot to put it on there, or, don't, just let him know.
Have a list of properties that are being questioned, or.
Andy has a list of properties that he's done letters and, but now we're at a point where winter's here. So now we're back to readdressing this in the spring of two thousand and twenty, which is.
At least we will be prepared.
Right. Can we put this on the list? The, oh, the.
Oh, that's, I've got, the guy from Down East is gonna be bringing that stuff in the next couple of weeks to do. He's gotta cut each panel individually.
Down East is coastal.
It was coastal before, is that changed?
Coastal, no, it's coastal, I think, just intro. Anyway, he's gonna come, and he's gonna cut each one individually, and the gentleman from the shade place in Bangor is coming. Or is going to tell me when, when those are gonna be available, so that we'll have both bottoms and the tops changed.
And the, and the blinds?
And the horizontal clarity and, and the bottom piece, so you're not looking at blue bowl, like the kindergarten class did.
What's it, what's it look like over at the school, Craig?
That was amazing, that worked out well, you know how many people talk to that insulated wood over there?
What's it look like over at the school, St. that stuff?
All, all the.
It's a, you can get different colored metal, over there, they call it dark bronze, so it's, it's thin metal. It's metal, metal, this foam inside.
Yeah, they'll, they'll custom fit them, right.
So it slides in, and then you put two rubber pieces underneath it, they, they kinda wedge in to hold it in place, and then they silicone all the way around it.
Is it safe here, here, you think?
Supposed to be the same thing, yes, and it's waterproof.
Same, yeah.
Expensive, but it is nice.
Two hundred and twenty-five per panel.
But when, when you get it, you say, it seems like a lot of money for this.
Well, and it's thinner than the blue stuff, too.
This, this stuff over there, panels over there, probably have to, three goes an inch.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Remember how expensive that insulated skirting is, for underneath the double wire or something, that stuff is scary, expensive.
I think we just would've painted it something other than blue or something else there. Off white, and probably wouldn't have noticed, and leave the duct tape on.
Well, they get, they said you get them in bad colors, hopefully you get something that matches.
I believe there's different shades you can get.
And we'll go blue.
Well, he, he says it comes one color, and you, you basically have to color it.
I know if you wanna get it colored, the price goes way up. If you don't get the standard, I thought there was one of the ones standard color.
Either way, so it's work in motion?
And I don't know, Chris told you guys, we've done several interviews, well, probably thirteen interviews.
And we've got one or two more.
So you guys thinking sometime after the first of the year?
Well, I, I suspect, yeah, I suspect we'll make our decision in the next week. And then hopefully by the first of the year.
Get them in place.
We've got a long period of time.
We've got a lot, I'd like to get them trained, especially on elections, we just worry that there's gonna be three elections next year, federal, state elections. There's one in March, one in June, and one in November, so I'd like to get somebody in here with that. Training is the big thing, if we can get them trained well, you know, all the necessary trainings.
I had something else, but it just eludes me right now.
Are you looking for a motion? I was just waiting, he was, he thought he had one more thing to add.
Open internet. Wednesday, we may be losing internet, do you have any further update?
I can tell you the latest update was, if it's out for just three or four hours, he doesn't think you're gonna lose it anyway, because he has. UPS backup down now, backup batteries, he thinks he can get at least three or four hours worth out of that.
Okay.
No guarantees, but he thinks three or four hours would be fine, you would never lose it.
So we shouldn't have a problem?
Well, I don't know, I still have a trench in the front guy down there that was supposed to be filled in yesterday, so I can't really say.
Are there any pipes in it now?
Yep.
Full of water?
Yep.
No cable of water?
Yep.
Did they try to float the string down?
Sucking strings through a conduit full of water is not really easy to do. It was a challenge today, but we have string through it, so, anyway, we're running cable tomorrow, but, um, yes, he thinks, our IT guy thinks that he's getting a battery backup to keep you guys up for at least three or four hours.
Okay, and what time you get, is, is that shut down probably eight or nine, or? Cause it, when the internet goes.
You'll know.
We'll be shutting down.
Yes.
Alright, so that's everything?
That's it.
Alright, yes, looking for a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Moving second, all in favor? That is a vote.